I texted Bob to see if he's coming. It's odd for him not to be the first one on, so I wonder what's going on here. I'm giving Bob another minute or so. Our first agenda item is reorganization, so try to have everybody here for that. So everybody should start thinking about what they want to do before they get assigned. I wouldn't dare leave if I was any of you. Well, I guess we 7:05. Anybody want to voice whether or not we shouldn't start? All right, so basically tonight's meeting, I'm going to call the Frontier Regional School Committee meeting to order. I'm calling it to order because it is a reorganization meeting, and so that starts by me calling it to order at 7:05. And the first order of business is reorganization, so I am looking for nominations for chair. I guess you could. You could say, "Darn you for missing the meeting," and then we could have the vice chair run the meeting. There's a long list of stuff to go through here, so... Hearing no nominations. Anybody have any self-nominations?
Are we allowed to nominate Bob if he's not here?
We could. We could, and then if he refuses it for any reason. It's odd that he's not here, so I'm hoping there's nothing wrong, because he logs in quarter of usually.
I know you talk to him a lot. I mean, do you know if he's interested in doing it again for another year?
I don't know. He didn't say he wasn't interested, so...
I mean, I'll nominate him if there's no problem with doing that.
So basically, we can move forward with that. We'll nominate him as chair. It gets messy, because the chair has to do the appointing of all the subcommittees. And so that would fall on the vice chair, whoever that would be going for, and the committee would just have to be comfortable with the vice chair doing that. It's kind of like the big... It's one of the, I want to say, powers of the chair is to, you know, basically, you know, cause the meetings and sets the agenda. But the other thing is, they set the subcommittee. So never had this problem before, so not really sure how to navigate. So I'm looking for any thoughts. Bill Smith, you've been around.
Is it imperative that we reorganize this evening?
Well, we could table reorganization until the next meeting, and vice chair, it's you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, there are no changes in anybody's term or anything. It'll be the same bunch of us, band of us here next month as there is this month. So we always waited to reorganize till after all the elections, but that's not a factor in this. So I don't see any harm in waiting. I don't anyway.
You know what? I think probably the best thing would be someone to motion to table this to the next meeting, get a second, and vote the table. It would be the most appropriate thing, since it is reorganization of the power of the school committee, so I think that'd probably be the best course. Would you agree, Bill?
I do agree, yes.
So move.
A motion to table reorganization to the next meeting. Do I have a second?
I'm not looking at the screen. I don't know anybody's voices, so who is the...
That would be Philip.
Philip's moved it. Second is...
Bill Smith.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of tabling reorganization to the next meeting?
So we've probably got to do a roll.
I'll do the roll call vote down the list from the top to bottom here. Bill Smith?
Yes.
Judy Pierce?
Yes.
Damian Fosno?
Yes.
Lynn Roberts?
Yep.
Bill Cantor?
Yes.
Ashley Dion?
Yes.
Chief McFarland?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Olivia Leon?
Yes.
And Melissa Novak?
Yes.
Since that's chaired, I will hand the meeting over to the vice chair of the previous year, which is Mr. Smith, to review and approve the minutes of September 1.
Will I obtain a motion to approve the minutes, September 1?
So move, Philip.
Phil, I know your voice. You're disguised. You're disguised. Talk fast.
All right.
Second, I'll second it.
Any discussion about the minutes? Otherwise, we'll do the roll.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Bill Cantor?
Yes.
Keith McFarland?
Yes.
Melissa Novak?
Yes.
Judy Pierce, yes. Lynn Roberts?
Yep.
Bill Smith?
Yep.
Olivia Leon?
I believe I have to abstain because I wasn't there. Is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Yep, Damian Fosno.
Same goes for me. It was my birthday that day, and I apologize for not attending. I had other bigger plans.
Name excuse.
And Ashley Dion.
Which day was this?
This was September 1st.
Was I there? I think I was, yes.
Thank you.
Minutes have been approved. Financial statements, Shelley.
Okay, I shared the financial reports today. I did want to note that I sat with my staff this afternoon after I had sent the reports out, and we continue to clean up accounts. I mentioned with the last meeting that with the roll over to the new year, a lot of times with salaries and wages, the existing account of the prior year gets carried over. So we're still working to clean that up. Next month, it should look like it's in much better shape. You'll see a lot less negatives and things in the right spot. But I'm happy to take questions if you have them about any of the account codes. There were 14 warrants signed by Mr. Hala totaling $1,062,399.56. Judy, I can input that in the minutes if needed later. Pull it from the report if you need it.
I got it from the report. Thank you.
Great. Any questions about the financial reports before I keep going? Okay. So we knew that there were going to be expenses associated with the learning model, teaching model for this year. You know, we weren't exactly sure what they would be, but we certainly knew that they would exist, and depending what way we went, they would be either beneficial for us to reduce staffing or have less facilities needs. And as it turns out with this hybrid model, we've had some challenges making sure that we have adequate staffing in the building as well as class coverage, not just actual positions filled. But if we have a class that's being taught remotely, we still potentially have to have someone in the building to be present with the students and supervise the students that are in the building. So administration has worked to make sure that all of those needs were met, but it did put some hardship on us in our salaries and wages. And then for facilities and technology, we've also had some things that we've had to overcome there. We've had quite a few tents we've put outside. I'm sure everybody has seen. We had to do some retrofitting of the building for HVAC systems as well as isolation room and other things along those lines. I mentioned previously that we do have a good amount of grant funding for COVID relief. However, that is, at this point, pretty much all fully allocated. It might not be spent yet, but we know how we're going to spend it. So we're currently having to dip into general funds for some of these additional expenses. You know, I still think that we're in a good spot. I don't have concern about any of the accounts right now, but I did want to let you know the volume of things that we've had to do to be prepared for staff and students to come back to school. And we still have that money in the school choice fund that we allocated restricted specifically for COVID-related needs. There are some expenses paid out of that currently that we might move around as I look closer at the grant funding, but it is something that might have an impact on our general fund moving forward depending on how much more we have to continue to do. So I just wanted to put that on your radar and give you an update about that. We also have a special education issue that came up since the last meeting. So my understanding is that there is a student who comes to us as a school choice student, but there has been conversation with the administration, special education director, and George regarding the needs of this student, and it has come to a point where we are needing to place the student out of district. So that is an unforeseen out-of-district expense for us. The positive side of this is that because it is school choice, we should be able to receive all of that back through school choice increment claiming. So we're going to pay it out of school choice under the assumption that we're going to receive that money fully back at the end of the year. So assuming that our claim is fully approved, we shouldn't have actually any additional expense coming in, even though this is something that we weren't The only other point I wanted to touch on today was about the school lunch program. So the USDA extended the free meals for students through December 31st. That will be for all students for breakfast and lunch, anyone who wants to have breakfast and lunch. So that's great news for our community that may need some extra support right now. But unfortunately, a program that relies on revenue coming in to pay salaries and wages, it does put some additional hardship on us, because the reimbursement is not enough to cover all of our expenditures. So the school lunch account currently has almost $20,000 as a balance, but our wages total $36,000. Simple math, we're not going to have enough in there to cover that. The hope is that the government reimbursement that we receive will at least cover the food costs for us, but we are going to look into moving off those school lunch salaries onto the general fund. So this is just another one of those things that, you know, is because of this crisis, these challenges we're having to deal with. And we don't know if USDA is going to extend this waiver through the end of the year. DESI has asked them to. If that's the case, then our families would be eligible for free lunch for the remainder of the school year as well. Again, really beneficial for a lot of folks that need it right now. We're happy that that's happening for them, but it will continue to cause some hardship for us. So we're in constant communication with the Food Service Department about cost of goods and what we might anticipate our meal reimbursement to be. We'll hopefully know more at the next meeting, and I am monitoring it really closely to see how we can manage this. That's all I have today. Pretty short. I'm happy to take questions if you have it.
Any questions for Shelley? Thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Student council report?
Hi. Hi, I'm Maddie. I'm a senior. And today I started, I had my last first day of school. You all did. So I've reached out to a few people, actually a lot of people, just to see how Schoolology worked for them and how they're doing going fully remote today. So a common theme throughout the whole day is a lot of students were really confused about how to use Schoology, because we didn't have the information to sort of find our assignments and log on to conferencing in a timely manner. That was one of the huge things that a lot of people had said to me. Also, some teachers are using Google Meet and some are using Schoology, and the people who have that sort of scheduling, it's hard for them to find everything in Classroom and Schoology, especially if their class is in both. And that's been confusing, and that was addressed. Also, the way that you can only see your teacher in the Schoology conferencing, some students are like, "Woohoo! Love that! That's great." But other students feel extremely isolated in doing that, because they're home, they can be home alone. And they were just wondering if there's a way where they can see all their classmates, or even just a few of them at a time. Also, something, they said it was way better than the spring. They were so happy that everything ran smoothly. Everybody was like, "Woohoo!" What else? A huge thing that almost everybody asked for was a survey, whether that be provided by student council or by the administration, just so everyone can see how the entire population likes this, because I might be talking to seniors who really love it, and because we're friends, they're not going to say anything. But somebody else who I'm not friends with or doesn't know might just give their opinion, which would be really nice to hear somebody's true and honest opinion about how everything's working out. Also, another thing with Schoology, is there a way to disable the audio test at the beginning that you have to take every time, because that slows down class a lot for some kids, which is interesting. And then, the last thing I have is the lunch timing for some students, if they're home alone with their siblings, and they have to help them get settled and make lunch for them. And also, if they're home alone and they have to prepare their own meals and do everything else in that, and get on class and leave class and get prepared in that 20-minute timeframe, a lot of them have been stressed about that, even though it's the first day, trying to get everything done within 20-ish minutes in order to be back for class and have their siblings ready for class.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Mr. Hala, I see you are here now. I skipped over public comment by accident.
Yeah, that was an excellent student report, by the way.
Totally agree. That's some good first-day work. Thank you.
You're welcome, Maddie.
Robert, you are here?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I had to, you know, hit that Ctrl-D button, so I do apologize to everybody. I was, I had in my mind that every meeting I canceled this week, so I was hoping for next week's meeting. So I apologize.
Got to go back to public comment, Bob. I skipped over it. Okay. If there's any public comment, if you want to put in the chat area, and then we can call on you.
So basically, what we did is I put in a procedure for this week, as an emergency procedure, to, in the posting, that if people wanted to do public comment, they had to put it submitted in writing in advance of the meeting, or drop it off at the central office. And we are going to talk about that policy today due to the, I guess, the Zoom bomb, as we'll use Zoom, even though we used Google Bomb that we had unfortunately last week. So we'll be talking about that more. So we did not receive any. There wasn't a lot of time for people to kind of submit, so I understand that was a factor in this thing, but we had to, I'm basically looking at the, we'll talk about that when we talk about the policies, but we're looking at procedures, what our neighboring districts are using, and asking people to just submit their comments in advance. And so we didn't have any when Donna left today. Even though it says 24 hours, we even looked right up to the end for this meeting.
Thanks. I'm just pulling up my agenda now, so I do apologize again. So...
We did the financial statement already?
All right.
Have we reorganized yet? Or did, because I was absent, did I get, I see people laughing. You want to fill, okay, I got it. I know.
They were going to do that to you, but they were too kind. I said, I told them they could. Basically, they tabled reorganization, so we could, if the commissar desires, we could go back and take care of that business now, that we have a full, we have a full meeting.
Okay.
Reorganize, I guess you'd have to vote to untable it, is that?
Yeah, you're going to have to vote to untable it, which is fun.
Mr. Chairman, move to take reorganization off the table.
To put it back on the table, you mean?
Yeah, out from under, on top of whatever it has to do.
I second that.
Okay, hold on. You guys are going to just have to bear with me for a second, because I deleted that entire section in the minutes. I just need a minute to collect myself. Donna hooked me up, and then I screwed it up. Okay. On a motion, I didn't hear the motions. Was it Damian?
I think Bill.
Thanks, Bill Smith. Okay. I'm going to do a roll call.
Please.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Bill Cantor?
Yes.
Okay, Keith?
Melissa?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Olivia?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yep.
Damian?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You know what? I'm going to do my best, but all right. Does somebody have a list of what's being reorganized?
Well, basically, at that point, I take back over the meeting, because the chair is no longer the chair. And so now I'm opening up nominations for chair.
I nominate Bob Hala.
I do have a second?
I second that.
Is that Olivia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, just to, you know, everybody's smiling. I actually talked to Darius this week. I think it was the beginning of the weekend. I asked him, "Would you like me to be chair still?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "Okay." I says, "If you want somebody new or young blood, or if there's anybody else out there that wants to do it," you know, I do it. I do it for everybody. I do it for the kids, for us, and I'm happy to do it. Plus, I'm retired, so I can sneak into places sometimes, into the school when other people are working still, so.
Any other nominations or closure of nominations? Mr. Decker has always clicked to close those things, as remember Mr. Decker doing that. Any other nominations or closure of nominations? Someone's got to...
I close the nomination. Move the close. I move the close.
I'm not looking, so...
Olivia.
Olivia. Thank you. Sorry. I know you think I'm a pain in the ass, but I'm really not. Sorry to swear.
I believe her sister, we have to, we have to vote to close nominations, and then we vote Bob to be chair. I believe that's correct. So we have two votes, right?
Okay, so roll call vote. Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Keith McFarland?
Yes.
Lynn? Lynn Roberts?
Yes.
Damian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yeah.
Melissa?
Phil? Yep.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Olivia?
Yes.
And now we have, we had a first and a second, so we give the motion to, point roll call as chair is on the table, so Judy, go the roll call again.
Okay. Mary?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yep.
Damian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Phil?
Yeah.
Ashley?
She just had to step away.
Okay. Bob?
Yes.
Judy, yes. And Olivia?
Yes.
Where'd Ashley go? She got to come back? No, she stepped away. Okay, Ashley, I'm just going to write that down. Okay, what's next on the...
So Bob, we're going to go through. Do you have the list of all the committees and subcommittees in front of you?
I do not, sir.
All right, so I'll go through. So next, Bobby, I'll walk you through it. So, Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do we vote or point to Chair? I'm stuck there.
She had it as votes. I mean, I remember when I deleted everything, everything I was deleted was votes. Oh, sorry.
Do we have a nomination for Vice Chair?
I nominate Bill Smith.
This is yours, Bob. You're running the meeting now.
Well, I see Judy's typing. Do we have to vote on that for Vice Chair?
We do have to vote on it, yes.
Or should I close?
You can ask if there's any more nominations, yeah.
Is there any other nominations?
Move to close the nominations?
I don't believe you have to close. I don't think you have to vote to close the nominations once Bob is chair. He can say, "Here you know their nominations, moving forward the vote."
But we have the vote on?
Yep.
Bill Smith?
Okay, Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Keith McFarland?
Yes.
Lynn Roberts?
Yeah.
Damian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Ashley's still gone. Bob?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Olivia? What's next?
Secretary's next, Bob.
You know what? Any one of you can have it.
I nominate Judy Pierce. I second.
We're really a seasoned professional.
Anybody else want to make nomination for Secretary? No? You want to do your own roll call there?
Yeah, that's fine. Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yep.
Damian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Ashley's still gone. Yep. Bob?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Olivia?
Yes.
Okay.
First subcommittee, Bob, is the Budget Subcommittee. Currently, you have Mr. Smith from Waitley, Ms. Raymond from Deerfield, Mr. McFarland from Sunderland, and Mr. Cantor from Conway.
Does everybody in that group want to do it again this following year, coming year?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Yes.
Keith?
Yeah. All right, Negotiations Team, while it's not a negotiation year, you never know what comes up. They may have to have a subcommittee called. Currently, I have Phil Cantor from Conway. We need a new representative from Deerfield, because Robert Decker's no longer on the committee. Lynn Roberts from Sunderland and Bob Hala from Waitley. So you need to deal with... Lynn Roberts from Sunderland, and Bob Holler from Whately. So, you need a Deerfield person if you're keeping the other ones on that committee.
I know Misty might be thinking about it, but I know her days are until at least five o'clock, and sometimes I know when we do meet, it could be three, four, five, or six, or seven, so.
Again, it's not a real active year, hopefully, on that, but.
I'm happy to do it, if we need that.
Olivia? Thank you.
Thank you.
Frontier Capital Improvement Committee is the next group. You have Bob Holler, Bob Decker needs a replacement from Deerfield, you have Phil Cantor from Conway, and Judy Pierce from Sunderland. So, you need another Deerfield person there, and if everybody wants to continue on the committee.
I'm, I'm interested in doing the capital improvement.
Thank you, Damian.
Yep.
It's gonna be one of those, next couple of years will be pretty important, so.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I will, uh, bring up with that, I'm, I'm actually really interested in that sub, subcommittee, um, but obviously, you guys know my work schedule. When I'm home, I have multiple time off to help, and then if, if you catch me on a work week, and I'm in between flights, or in the evening, I'm, I'm now done sitting in a hotel room, but, so it'll do.
Unforeseeable future, so that's, it'll be a good shift.
Thanks, Damian.
Yep.
That's done, okay. Um, the Collaborative Representative currently is Lynn. Is Lynn?
Lynn shaking her head, I think. Is that, is that a yes?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, we'll continue. The Mars Representative? Was Bob Decker, so we need a new person there.
And I'm not sure what time Mars has met before, you know, for times.
Infrequent meetings. I imagine it can be virtual at this point, so it'll be a lot easier on people. That's the Mass Association of Regional School Committees? So.
We knew. Sorry, we didn't.
Regional schools.
We got three Deerfield people on the screen here, so. Want me to flip a coin?
So, Darius, can you tell us more about it? Like, what do they do? When do they meet?
They have, um, I gave me sigh there, sorry about that. The, uh, they meet, uh, the Mass Association of Regional Schools, they have different, um, they have meetings, I think, maybe quarterly, so maybe it's four times a year. They used to have to drive to Eastern Mass to attend that. They usually was at, uh, can't think of the name of the technical school out there. Um, this time, it's, it's most likely will be virtual. So, you just find out what the problems and what's going on with regional schools, hear what other regional school committee members are talking about. They also get involved with the politics, the state funding politics of regional schools, and it's a, you know, it's kind of, so it's a good kind of, it's a good education about regional schools, as well as, you know, hearing what other, you know, we're a unique system within a much larger system. So, that's basically what it's about. Basically, you're going to report back to here. Um, actually, probably wouldn't be going where there'd be a virtual meetings probably this, this year, so.
I just still don't see anybody smiling yet. And Mary, I forgot, I, I didn't see you on the screen, I don't see your picture, so I apologize for not listing you.
I saw Missy on mute for a second. She was thinking about it.
In much time, I could probably commit to that.
Well, we nominate Missy, right? Is that what we have to do?
You just appoint.
You're sure. See, you got the job.
All right, thanks.
Um, Policy Review Committee is Bob Holler, Phil Cantor, Olivia Leon, and Lynn Roberts. See.
Everybody shaking their head.
Okay.
Can I get that again? I'm missing, I have Bob, Lynn, and Olivia. Who is the fourth?
Bob, Olivia, Lynn.
Just three?
Nope, Phil.
Phil.
Oh, thank you.
And the final one, I believe I have here, is the Sick Leave Bank. Um, I have Lynn Roberts, and Bob Decker was on this committee, so we need a second person. This committee only meets if there's a discussion within the contract of someone asking the sick, trying to access the sick leave bank. The school committee has a way in on that committee. So, it's made up of, I believe, two teachers and two, um, two school committee members. So, not a very, you may have to meet once this year.
You can sign me up, or if somebody else wants to do it.
Ah, I can carpool with Lynn.
There you go. Would you, you would like to do it?
Sure, why not? I don't care.
All right, thank you.
That's low hanging fruit.
All right, we're officially reorganized.
All right.
You're on, Bob, you're on unfinished business update of school opening, reopening.
Yep, I got that reopening. Um, are you the one speaking, or, or you're gonna take a break?
I'm gonna take a break. I'm gonna make my principal kind of speak. So, uh, George, are you out there? And then I think, um, I know I also have Sarah here and Scott here as well, that they may jump in on some of these topics as well. So, let George take the lead. How did the first day of remote learning go? We got Maddie's snapshot. What did you say?
And, and, uh, I heard a lot of the same things, but I also heard, I mean, I heard good, and I heard bad, and I heard mixed, uh, overall. You know, I, I would have to say that it was, it was, I think it went about as well as, as we thought it was gonna go. Um, you know, uh, it's definitely a challenging time for us, um, but a, a lot of, uh, a lot of, a lot of what the teachers had going today was really, I, I have to say, was really good. Uh, they've been really pitching in together, uh, helping each, helping each other out a lot, uh, especially with the Schoology platform. Uh, the middle school has been working really hard together as well, uh, like, with their team-based approach, uh, to, to really create something special for the kids. So, overall, I would say, I'm, I'm gonna say that I feel like we're headed in the right direction. I feel like the wheels are up, uh, up on the plane, if that's an appropriate metaphor. Um, and, you know, I'm hopeful that, that things are gonna keep getting better. I mean, we expected some bumps the first couple of days, and I know, uh, that, you know, I, I feel like we've been able to handle them really well. Um, so, I, you know, I, I feel like it's just gonna keep getting better, and I definitely feel it's a definite improvement over what was going on in the spring. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, it's just, it's, it is what it is. And, uh, you know, so I, I'm grateful for, for the staff and for everybody's help. And, um, I'm not sure if Sarah or Scott wanna, wanna add anything, you know?
Yeah, so I was, I was actually pleasantly, um, pleased, um, today. Um, I expected, um, 100 phone calls at 7:47, uh, with students not being able to get online, or, uh, forgetting their passwords. And while we did have some of those phone calls coming through, I think we were able to help a lot of students through that process first thing in the morning. Um, I have to say, walking through the halls on the first day of school, and hearing the echoes of teachers' voices in their classrooms, um, coming into the halls, as opposed to that feeling that you get when there's a lot of people in the building, and there's, um, it was just a very eerie, different kind of sound going on. Um, but when you're able to see what was going on, as you peeked over teachers' shoulders and saw the kids, um, they're engaged, and they're happy to be back. Um, I, personally, I have a 12-year-old, and he was in seventh grade today, and, um, he's dancing around the living room tonight, because he's just happy to be back into that, um, rhythm and that routine and that newness of school.
Well, that's great. Scott, do you have anything for us? No? Okay. Um, I saw Allison was on, can we get a perspective from the, from one of the teachers? Hello, Allison?
Hi there. Um, this is, this is just me. This is just me. I felt like I was teaching the first time again. It, it's very strange, and so, this is my 23rd year, and I feel like I just got sort of like whipped back to, it's totally different. Um, I miss the kids personally. Um, and I'm exhausted, so being on this meeting tonight is sort of like, the last thing I wanted to do was be on a computer screen. Um, but, um, it is what it is. So, it's like, we move forward, you know? That's, that's the way I'm gonna do it. It's like, I do this for a reason, and I love the kids that I'm teaching. I love all my kids, so, um, I'm gonna do what, the best I can for them. And I asked them, I begged them all to forgive me for the stumbles that are gonna happen, because I'm a classroom teacher, not a computer teacher. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it my best shot.
Thank you, Allison. Appreciate it. Um, is there anything else on the school reopening? We good? Um, anti-racism and equality? Who's gonna?
So, I asked if, um, Sarah would talk a little bit about that, um, how we're approaching that. The, we did, um, receive the, um, the committee work has put together their mission statement and goals, and it's posted on our website now. Um, and it was, I believe, sent out to all of you as well. A lot of great work is there, and now a lot of, they've kind of set the foundation of a lot of work that has to now, um, get done in our community, uh, in our community, rather. So, um, a lot of kind of things going on there. So, I wanted to have Sarah talk a little bit about, um, you know, our professional development approach, because that's the area she oversees, and so she can kind of be more commanding on that. Um, and then have the other commissioners jump in, um, you know, where they can about the different areas, the different pillars that, the four pillars, um, of the mission, um, what we're trying to do here at Frontier. Sarah?
Great, thank you. Um, so, we worked this summer, and I say "we" as a real collective "we", um, because there were many, many faculty at Frontier. Uh, Kelsey Cropp has taken a leadership role on the anti-racism and, uh, committee this summer. Um, and Scott will speak a little bit more to the four areas there, but I'll focus mostly on professional development. I'd also like to call in Allison to talk a little bit about, uh, what's specifically going on in the Social Studies Department. Um, there's also been a lot of work done in the English Department, um, around this topic, and, um, really bringing some literature, um, into students' hands, and having real discussions about this, and getting started even before we've had a lot of professional development. Um, so, we started off, um, during our 10 days, we had a couple of hours of overview, um, from, uh, Kelsey Cropp, Melissa Strelke, and, um, Amanda, a former, uh, student of Frontier. The three of them led us through a professional development activity, um, during our 10 days of PD, one of our 10 days of PD, to really just kick it off. Um, our next stage will be, um, buying a book for the faculty to read. We'll probably have a few selections, so that we can do some more in-depth discussions, um, and use it as a launching point for, um, changing things in the classroom. We're also doing, um, a lot of changes to curriculum. There are departments, English and Social Studies in particular, that this has been a focus on, um, not just this year, but for several years in the past. And it's just, um, you know, there's renewed energy around it, um, even though I'm not sure that there, if, there ever wasn't a lot of energy around this particular topic. So, we'll be working on this throughout the year. It's one of our three professional development focus areas for this year. Um, and we'll be bringing in a speaker from the outside, um, and also, um, as I said, doing the book discussion groups. Scott, I don't know whether you want to fill us in on the committee work in general, and then we can move to Allison to talk about, um.
Sure. Uh, I will say, um, that, um, we have split up into our four subcommittees, and we're gonna be spending the fall, um, meeting in those subcommittees, and then reporting back quarterly to the larger committee. Um, we have the, um, the Professional Development, Development Committee, the, um, School Climate and Culture Committee, the, um, uh, oh my goodness, what's the other one? Policy Committee. Um, and, and so those are some examples. Um, the committee I'm in is the, the Culture and Climate Committee, and we've developed, uh, goals for ourselves to, um, hit the ground running with the students. We, we, we looked at some short-term goals we could do that are tangible with the students, even in this remote setting. And then we, um, have a targeted long-term goal, uh, to change the culture. For example, you know, you know, putting a focus on, on the use of the N-word, um, in our general, like, pop culture vernacular with, with, with music and, and all of that, that gets loosely thrown around with, with our students, um, to choose, to, you know, change the, the use of that language away from, um, the connotations in pop culture. Um, the other thing that I, I do want to mention, and, and, um, is for our own professional development as administrators, uh, we're, we're also going to be doing some professional development too, with Dr. Elizabeth Pryor from Smith College, uh, who's going to, uh, do some work with us as an administrative team, uh, with both districts, Union 38 and FRS, uh, which I think it'll be very fruitful. We're gonna have more of a roundtable, kind of informal, uh, discussion group with her. And, um, certainly, you know, you know, when you look around our administrative table, um, it's not, it's not very diverse. So, I think, you know, in terms of getting, uh, a good handle on what we're doing and instructing in terms of anti-racism would be good for us as administrators, you know, could sort of start from the top. Um, so I just wanted to make a plug for that, too. But I am excited with our, our Culture, uh, Subcommittee, because, you know, it's got a lot of students involved in it, and, um, you know, that's the work that, that our students, um, are eager to do, um, and I'm excited to be working with them on that. That's that.
Does anybody else want to say anything?
Oh, question?
Yes, Missy.
I wonder if, uh, I think there's some mascot stuff going on, too?
That's right, Missy. Thank you. Um, that is actually one of the goals. I'm sorry for not bringing that up. Uh, one of the goals of our School Climate, um, Committee is, um, is doing the contest, um, to get an official school-wide mascot that everyone's going to, um, be able to use. And, um, I've actually sent some prototypes over to Jack Purcell, who's our art teacher, who's gonna be overseeing the, the, the contest, and providing his, uh, area of expertise is in comic book drawing. And so, he's gonna be able to, um, work with the kids, and we're gonna have that contest going, and we're gonna pick the top three, and then, uh, our, we're developing a, a mascot Subcommittee. Um, we're gonna pick the top three, and then bring it to a school-wide vote to, uh, see what the winning mascot's going to be. Um, I'm very interested to see what the kids come up with. Um, you know, we've had very good success each year, uh, doing that type of contest with our school yearbook cover photo, um, and picture. Um, and that's always been, it's fun to see. So, I'm looking forward to see what the kids come up with, with the mascot.
And do you, sorry, uh, do you, just a quick follow-up, pass off, Keith. Uh, do you, do you know if there's also gonna be some education around, uh, the change in the, uh, an updated mascot?
Yes, and that's actually, that's embedded in a lot of the work we're doing with the anti-racism curriculum, um, in the Curriculum Subcommittee as well. There's a lot of, um, uh, intersectionality with our, our groups. Um, we're working, uh, our, we have a couple folks in our Subcommittee, our Ultra Subcommittee, that are also, um, giving feedback to the Curriculum Subcommittee. Um, and if I failed to mention the Curriculum Subcommittee earlier, I apologize, but that's the other, that's the fourth Subcommittee. Uh, so, yes, that, that is definitely a plan, Missy, uh, to, to have that in there.
Thank you.
Allison, do you want to say a few words about just getting down into the, into the details, into the weeds of what's actually happening in the classroom?
Sure, thank you. Um, uh, first, I just wanted to say that one of the, um, one of the important things that, that the Social Studies Department would like people to know is that over the past 10, 15 years, the Social Studies Department has already been changing a lot of our curriculum and building it out over the years to bring in more voices and to be much more inclusive. Um, in 2018, um, the Department of Education put out the new 2018 Social Studies and History Standards, which, again, expanded, um, voices of marginalized groups and have brought that into the curriculum. So, there's a huge anti-racism component in the 2018 standards, which we're basing our social studies courses on. Um, the eighth grade this year is gonna be re, starting to read stamped from the beginning, the younger person's version. The whole eighth grade is gonna read that. Um, in current events in the spring, I'm gonna be doing anti-racism book groups with my juniors and seniors in, in an elective. Um, the whole Social Studies Department right now is reading, um, Isabel Wilkerson's new book, Cast, which is a new way of sort of framing, like, the social structure, um, that, uh, has, has some really interesting connections with racism. Um, and I've, and actually talking to Amanda, who's consulting with us, I, I gotta get back to her. She's a former student of mine, and I'm gonna ask her about some of the materials I'm using, if she's got suggestions to bring everything in. And, and, um, we, we feel that, like, even with the courses that we've added over the years, we're bringing in a lot of, um, discussions of groups of people all around the world, marginalized groups, voices that are unheard. And then, the Social Studies Department this summer has been using a critical analysis tool, where we've been looking at our curriculum units to see what's excluded, who's not being talked about, um, in our history classes, and that's sort of some of the work that we're doing.
Thank you. Um, we have an update on the HVAC repairs.
Yep. So, I mean, the reason why it's on the list is that we had that initial report. I'm still waiting on the follow-up report. I thought I'd have it for today. They gave a general overview of their ongoing work, but they haven't given me the new numbers, the new readings, they're waiting for the work to be completed. We have spent quite a bit of money on the HVAC, on the cost of repairing the HVAC and getting everything up to speed and putting in exhaust systems in different portions of the school that didn't have them, such as the cafeteria, the nurse's office, guidance offices and such. So, you know, those numbers, Shelley, are you still there? Are you still with us, Shelley? I don't think Shelley has those numbers tallied up yet, but I think she's preparing for the next meeting, as we said in the meeting right before this, correct, Shelley?
Yep, I'm here, and that is exactly correct. We're just waiting for some final numbers from Jam Rog and some information from Bill Hildre.
So, but basically, just some rough numbers, you know, it's going to be, I would say, at least $30,000 in the amount of repairs that we had to do. Some of those things are going to come out of our COVID money. Shelley, any direction on those, where we're going to be paying for that from? I don't want to speak in your expertise area.
Yeah, and I don't have it all figured out yet, my goals by the next meeting, that I'll be able to give more information on it. Some of it, we're hoping to pay out of COVID. Frontier doesn't have quite as much access to some of the other things. For example, the elementary schools are going to get their UV lightings paid for, hopefully from an MIAA grant that Frontier's not eligible for. So, you know, and the expenses were much more extraordinary at Frontier. So, I don't want to give you exact numbers because I don't feel confident in them yet, but, you know, we're going to do everything we can to avoid depleting general funds and using COVID relief money on those expenses, because they really are COVID-related.
I think if, you know, if we have to pay for the remainder of anything, we have money in the E and D account, which is a perfect way of, you know, the towns aren't going to quibble of us spending money on safety, you know, safety of our kids and our teachers, so.
Yeah, I mean, and that's where one could, normally, I wouldn't be talking to you about repairs and not knowing the total costs of all of them, but we've kind of moved forward knowing that we're, either we pay for those costs, or we don't open up the building, you know, that kind of thing. And so that's why we've kind of moved forward, and we know budget-wise, it's still within the areas where we can cover it from. So that's kind of why there's a little bit of uncertainty there, because we're like, you know, give us a general, you know, give us the envelope estimate of that cost, get moving and get it done, you know what I mean? So that's basically how we've kind of approached those projects, which is not normally how you do things, you know, when you're doing building projects. It's a much more approach, different approach to that. You know, we also are, we are getting UV lighting as well for our major roof systems, the ones that deal with the multiple classrooms, the larger capacity ones, so they're going to get the UV lights, that's going to come in later. I don't know if I brought that up at the last meeting, I forget what I say, what meeting, but those are going to be coming in probably in October and be installed once they come in. And then we also have the new filtration of the MERV-13s, where those are going to be installed once they arrive. So they should be arriving any day now, they ordered them four to six weeks ago. So, you know, we're expecting that. So we're in good shape overall. While we don't have the report yet, I was told by the HVAC company, you guys are in good shape, is what he said. You know, but, you know, of course, people want to see the numbers, they want to see the change in the two reports. I will forward that report to all of you when I get it, and we can discuss that next meeting if it's necessary. But we're told that the control people that came in and fixed the control system, you know, that made the huge difference and opened up all those outside air units to bring in the oxygen levels that we needed and such, and air exchange we needed. So, but I understand that we're waiting on that final report, so hopefully that'll be shortly.
Do all the repairs need to be completed before students return and the two, after the two weeks of remote, or is that kind of separate?
Well, so, I mean, it becomes subjective. So, you know, the idea that, what the state basically said and the CDC basically says, you need to try to improve your oxygen intake, your air intake to the building, fresh air intake to the building, and that means something different in different school buildings. The MTA put out an advisory to their associations about a minimum of a two exchange, air exchanges per hour, but there's a lot of other things that are factors within that, that our HVAC person said that there aren't pointing out, is like, how much outside air are you pumping in versus how much you're pulling out, you know, and those kind of things. So, our goal is to get those two air exchanges per hour. If we had a single room that was not reaching that, we'd have to make a decision whether that class would be in that room, depending on the occupancy, the number of students in the room, that kind of stuff. I don't think we're going to be in that thing, he basically said that he believes all the classroom spaces and such are going to be, are going to meet that standard. That standard is, you know, you know, I won't get into a debate with Allison right now on that thing, but that standard is debated by people about where's that number come from, what does it really mean, that kind of stuff. I'm happy that we reached it in all of our buildings across the districts. So, you know, because we're able to reach it, I don't want, I don't have to fight about it, you know what I mean? So, you know, that kind of thing. So, that's kind of where we're at on this, I guess, that kind of answer, basically, we're sitting there.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was, if it was contingent on.
No, there's a lot of buildings that don't have the HVAC system we have. Who that is, Ashley, I'm not sure.
Sorry.
The, some buildings don't have the HVAC system to change over. We're, I'm talking to superintendents that are putting fans in windows, one in, one out, to improve, to improve air exchange because they don't have HVAC in rooms, you know what I mean, that kind of thing. So, the idea is to pull more oxygen in, and we're certainly doing that, we're opening up all our dampers. That is going to cost more money when it comes to heat season, because we're pulling in more air, and more air you pull through a system, the more air you have to heat. And so we'll try to get estimates on, you know, what that's going to affect as we project our energy costs as well. But that's what we got to do in this particular, in this particular time. So, that's the idea, is more oxygen in, you know, you know, opening up windows and that kind of stuff helps, but unless you're moving that air, it's as still as it is outside right now, you're not moving much air. So, again, also, you have to know, we have all those tents that have been set up, we didn't really talk about that, George, you know, when you report there about what the back of school is, but you, we have, how many, 11, 13? How many tents are out there right now? 10.
12.
12.
Well, 11 out there right now and one on the.
10 hands.
Coming.
10 up, he was hit two toes up. So, you know, a lot of the classes are going to be outside as well, and obviously, we're starting with smaller groups. So, you know, the timing-wise on this as well, when we get the, you know, the other kind of things in place as well, I think is going to be timed well, as there is well. So, that answers your HVAC question. But I brought it up because it was a big dig, it is a big expense, you know, and as Shelley said, you know, we're watching the budget, we do need to be, we're spending a lot of money upfront to get things running, and then we're going to have to get ultra-conservative again because the numbers coming out of the state, which is next in meetings, which is an October conversation, isn't pretty. So, we're going to have to still worry about, you know, being conservative through this year so that we don't have to have drastic cuts next year. Yeah, our problems are not ended yet, let's just put it that way, you know, so, new challenges, right? Let's keep it positive.
Do we have a decision yet on fall sports?
Fall sports right now, the three that are being offered, that have been approved or approved by the Board of Health last night, is field hockey, cross-country, and golf. This, right now, and Scott, I mean, do you want to kind of go more about what you're going to do with, they're going to have practices, they're going to try to keep, we got to keep kids active and healthy, so Scott, what's the game plan there?
So, Carl, our athletic director's been meeting regularly with the Franklin County ADs, and they decided to, as a county, be our own little athletic cohort. So, the teams that got approved, that our athletic directors collectively felt could run safely, and then with that plan going to the Board of Health last night, they're all going to play each other through, I think they have like 10 games, they're going to do through the month of October into maybe the first week or two into November. All the rest of the sports that would normally play in the fall, such as football and soccer and volleyball, have been moved to practice-only sports, and we are going to allow practices with the understanding that they are done under the EEA's guidance level, the state guidance levels. For example, in football, that's a sport that really can't move beyond their Level One guidance, and so what that means is basically no equipment, socially distant practices, drills, football-specific drills can happen, and we can do it in small enough cohorts. So that plan has been put together, and the Board of Health was okay with that. We're only talking about a couple days a week for practice. Any of those sports that cannot run in the fall are eligible to run in the wedge season that the MIA has developed, and that's that season they're putting in between winter and spring, which is going to run February 22nd through April 25th. Again, that's all if, you know, the state's in good shape. And, you know, it's going to be interesting to see soccer and football played at the end of winter. So if anyone has any extra snow shovels, it'd be great. But that's, you know, we'll worry about that when we get there. I think what's most important here, you know, we all agree, as an administration, Carl and the other athletic directors in Franklin County, it's about getting kids outside and participating for the social, emotional piece of it all. You know, speaking as a father, I have two boys that play sports, and having, you know, the spring sports season canceled on them, and really not having much to do this summer, it has had a detrimental effect. And so, you know, if anything, just getting kids outside and active and having that camaraderie with each other in a non-competitive nature is good enough for us right now. And it'll be nice to see, you know, those sports that were approved be able to compete locally. I do think it'll be successful, our county's in great shape right now with things, and, you know, our nurses are reviewing with our coaches all the safety measures, they're all taking the same safety courses the faculty had to have during our return to school. So, they'll all be brought up to speed, and we'll take it from there and see how it goes.
Why, why wasn't, I'm just asking, why wasn't soccer approved? Because that seems like.
So, soccer wasn't.
You don't touch it, and you don't, you know, it's just as close contact as field hockey, and you don't touch the ball.
The athletic directors felt that likely, if some schools approved it to play and others didn't, there would be no one to play. And collectively, the athletic directors around here and in the PVIC felt that if the state had labeled it as a Level Two at-risk sport, that it would be better, they'd be, we'd all be better off shelving it for the fall and seeing how it goes for the, for that wedge season. They felt that the close-body contact was higher, and the opportunity in soccer was higher than in sports like field hockey, where you have a stick and things like that. There are, each sport has specific safety guidelines they will have to follow, even within the competitive sport, for masking, for example, and longer timeouts, things like that. And so each coach has their own set of rules they have to follow. And volleyball, for us, you know, it's an indoor sport, and it would have been a very big challenge trying to police the amount of people allowed in the gym as for spectators. And also, too, we as a school are using the gym space for educational needs during the school day, and so turning that over and all that would have been a challenge for our custodial crew. And a lot of our schools in the county are in the same predicament, you know, using their gym spaces for the same reasons we are. So, you know, they all collectively decided to move that to the wedge season.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Anything else on the, on it?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Phil.
So, can I ask a question just about the various anti-racism initiatives? Because you kind of just like skipped right into the next thing. And so, the, my first question is, were there people of color involved in formulating those policies? And my second question is, where does the display of the Confederate flag on people's automobiles and personal effects factor in with those policies?
So, we haven't created any policies yet, so I just want to be clear, because we talked about policies, policies will be brought before the school committee. And we do have, you know, we do have people of color on our committee and helping out and advising us on that. And so, yes, it's kind of a full community, the committee itself is made up not just of administrators and teachers, we got community members, and, you know, people are very, you know, very active committee members within this effort. So, so, I mean, I think that kind of answered your first question. The policies regarding the Confederate flag and such, I don't think we've addressed that directly yet. It also runs down a very, you're going down an avenue where freedom of speech and, as we as a nation, fight over that, you know, where kind of things land there. So, we as educators are, you know, right now, building our, building our program to be educating students about what that means, how that people interpret the, you know, the Confederate flag, and so on and so forth. When it applies to a student, I think what you're asking, if a student was wear a Confederate flag in school, I've been down that road as an administrator on the, in Scott's position, I would say, where unless, the student has a freedom of speech unless it causes a disruption in school. And so you got to prove a disruption in school in order to limit a student's right, a freedom of speech. A student's freedom of speech in a school is one of the, one of the biggest protected items in schools. And it's very, it's almost, it's fascinating to how they protected that through many court cases through the years. And so, I think right now, wearing the Confederate flag in school, one could say would be a disruption because of where our nation is right now, you know, and, you know, which is very different, you know, where we could have said 10 years ago, is this a disruption in school, you know, that kind of thing. It's a, it's one of those things that, you know, working through. Scott, do you have any other, you know, thoughts on that within policies and how you're addressing those issues live right now?
You know, I've certainly had to deal with this in my seven years, you know, and before that, it was Darius. So, it has come up, and for me, you know, we have students of color in our building, and so that, it has been disruptive. And it has not really been forcefully challenged whenever I've had to enforce any dress code issues with that or displays. My one area that's going to be tricky going forward, and I am going to see guidance on this, is the interpretation of students wearing MAGA hats and such. And that's, you know, it's political speech, but unfortunately, I think it's been, no, I wouldn't say unfortunately, it's now, in our current climate, been attached to white supremacy. And so, that's going, that's my new, I'm anticipating the new challenge being that. And so I am going to be seeking guidance on how to address that, because, I think, for all of us, we all recognize that Confederate flag, I think that's an easy one in terms of how that is represented, but I am concerned about, you know, political speech and political clothing like that, just being honest with you all.
And I think Scott brings up a good point, you know, this being an election fall, that's going to be a very contentious election across the nation, maybe not, maybe not as much in the valley as across the nation, but maybe even the valley, so to speak, you know, it is, you know, and it's going to be, the schools are going to be a spot where it's about, you know, we have to be talking about, leading about what communication is, leading about what proper debate is, leading about, you know, ideas instead of, you know, the noise, you know, and so, it's going to be, it's going to be a difficult, and I know Allison's, those teachers are on the front lines of how do you have a discussion and hear all this side of people's arguments, because it's gotten, our nation's gotten ugly in the. And so.
I say this kind of in joking, but maybe not, because I wear a uniform to work, and I've been wearing a uniform for my whole professional career, and I don't see why we can't go back and have the kids wear uniforms.
Is their student rep on? Is your paws, an earful?
I do know how she feels about that, so.
Can I, can I ask, just can I ask, one, two questions?
Go ahead.
The first one is probably for Scott, which is to say, in addition to addressing sort of Black Lives Matter movement and all, you know, like racial diversity and sort of that general topic, so are you also covering different abilities, what some people label as disabilities or different abilities, like just people, you know, diversity is a sort of broad category, and it fits a lot of different things. I know that there's a lot of focus on the social movement associated with Black Lives Matters, but there's other, I've definitely gotten feedback from the community that I live in about even how school committee talks about different populations within our group. And I, so, that leads me to my next statement, which is, is there any consideration for the school committee members to participate in some way in this, in these, in the programs that you're developing? I feel like as representatives of the community, we have an obligation to. I, I feel like as representatives of the community, we have an obligation to share a common language and common goals for all of us. And it's not just, it's not just left on the, on the administrators and on the teachers and on the kids that are in the classes.
I can speak to that first part Judy. I, I, I agree with you. I don't want the efforts we've been doing to get lost with other things that, you know, we have a very robust best buddies program that has done a lot of campaigning. You know, we had a movement last fall to spread the word, to end the word, which was the R-word. It gets, you know, kind of loosely tossed around in our student vernacular. It's a descriptive word. And, you know, we, we, we have a very inclusive school community when it comes to all of our specialized programming and our students' needs. I know a lot of, all those teachers i- who teach those students in those programs do a lot of work putting, putting what they do out there and getting, and getting our, our students in special care into our classrooms. We spend, we do an extensive amount of PR for our Autism Awareness Month. So, you know, what I'm, what I, what I don't want to see is, is us lose sight on that, especially during these remote parts of our schooling. I, I think it's, you know, best buddies does its best work when school is, is in session and active where they can get involved and hold the, hold the prompts and, and things like that. So, you know, we still have that best buddies program. They're still going to do their work. My son's involved in that and, you know, so my point being, yes, we still have all that going on, but I don't want one overshadow the other. I think, you know, our, our work is to, you know, put it all collectively in one, one place.
Thank you.
I don't think that, I don't think that this sort of issue should be shelved, but I just have a huge problem with putting more strain, I guess, on the teachers and staff at this point when they're already dealing with so much. So, I understand everybody's point of view, I think, but I think a lot of this stuff, especially at the high school level, is, you know, comes from the home and how things are either addressed or explained in the home and, you know, if teachers want to touch on it, that'd be great and I appreciate it, but I, I just think that they have so much already going on that a policy written up would be great. I don't know how you're going to dictate what people put on their automobiles or what they wear, but I think a lot of it falls on the parents or how their, how kids are brought up.
Absolutely. Anybody else want to chime in?
So the only thing that Judy kind of, she asked the question and, and is if the school committee is interested in doing something around their own training on, on that kind of thing. And so I can bring that back to the group and see if there's anything they can recommend and, and if there's people that are interested in doing that, we could set up a, you can do a workshop. There's, you can definitely do workshops and how you, how you do that without having to have an open meeting to, to work on certain things, that kind of thing. So, I can look into that and get, and get some information. And if the committee wants to go that route, I can't make you do that kind of thing. You have to want to do that thing, I think, because you're my bosses. So, but I think it's a great idea. I think Judy really, you had on a great idea there.
Good question.
I get a lot of lecturing on the golf course. Let me just leave it at that.
You golf?
Yes. But you gotta be active. You gotta get out there. Everybody, Scott said it. I'm just following his lead.
That's right. It's very socially distant as well.
It is. I walk too. No cars.
Hey, I was fishing on Lake Waiola today for four hours and I had it all by myself. I had social distancing except for the eagles.
That's beautiful.
New, new business? Both the way first reading of policies, these particular policies or future policies?
Nope. So basically the, it's the public comment policy. So the question is, so, you know, we have a, I put in, in order to have a meeting tonight, we had to have some, we had a, because we got Zoom bombed and embarrassing and horrifically so. You know, I, I changed the public comment procedure and had people submit them by email or in, in writing, either by email or they can drop it off at the school prior to the school committee meeting. And so, I, I gave you an updated file for the public comment, our current public comment that says, and this is what we have to discuss tonight, is how do we want to do this moving forward? In the event that a special regrow meeting of the committee is held remotely, the public comments must be submitted in writing at least 24 hours in advance to the chair of the school committee. During the remote meeting, public comments will be shown on the screen for viewing or read at the meeting, provided the comments are consistent with the rules and procedures detailed in this policy. So, basically, you know, looking at, this is what a lot of our, our neighboring school districts are doing now. And it's once the public gets, you know, I, I think I would imagine that tonight's was a fast turnaround on this policy. But they're, you know, submitting them, we create an email address directly just for, if you saw it in the, if you saw the posting, we created an email address just for public comment for each committee and so forth. So that's the, that's the thought being brought before school committee right now. The open, the open, what do we call this? Google meet, I can't keep secure. And without restricting people in somehow. And so the same thing, you know, obviously happens with Zoom as well. So this is what people are doing. You know, Amber's is doing it. Hampshire Regional is doing it. And so that's the idea I'm bringing forward to this committee.
So I don't have a problem with, with the policy at all as is. I think probably the larger thing that maybe we should start talking about is how and when do we move forward to meet together and having, you know, an atmosphere where people can come to the meeting as well for public comment. I mean, I, I do like this virtual stuff. It allows me to get to a lot more meetings. But I think it's also a bad image when we've opened the school for kids to come in and then we still sit here at home or wherever on a computer screen. And I don't, you know, I don't know if it, I mean, if, if we're just voting on the policy that you put forward tonight, Darius, that's fine. I don't have an issue with that, with that policy in this platform. But I, I think it does create, you know, a topic that I think we do need to start thinking about and talking about of when we start meeting in person or, you know, some kind of hybrid, if you will, or a little bit of both.
So we attempted a hybrid meeting today for Deerfield. Right before this meeting, they actually did it in the, the media center. We had technical issues. And I have to tell you, I have to tell you the, it was, I, I just had to tip my hat to tech team who had the longest day. And then I had to ask them to try to put together the technology to have a Deerfield meeting, which was, the school committee was there. And then we had outside people presenting and stuff to them. And they were meeting in that space. And we ended up having to run off my laptop. It was kind of a mess. But the idea was there and they, they had that idea as well. The issue that we, I mean, we can, that's, that's not what we're talking about tonight. We're trying to talk about how we're going to deal with public comment because right now if we've had some public, you know, some large number of public on our, in our, in our, you know, depending on what the subject is, you could have 30, 40, 50, 100 people and you, right now you can't do a public meeting in that style. So, no matter what, we have to address how we're going to have the public give us input. And so that's kind of what we're, that's what we're looking tonight in the policy. We can always, I'm also putting it out there, we always can update our policy. If a policy doesn't work for us, we can change a policy at any time. And so I'm just saying that whatever you're saying is not set in stone for the next year, but it is how we're going to move forward with public comment. So, you know, I guess talk about the, you know, either the limitations or how do we, we address those things?
Billy, you have a question?
Yeah. So I, 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 I would like to just say, come right out and say that I'm not a big fan of this, of this new policy at all. And I don't, I, I, you know, I, I come from the perspective that the secret sauce of frontier success is the community support of frontier and the willingness of the communities to always vote the frontier budget. And that this chips away, this is the kind of thing that chips away at that. And that any sort of chipping away at our democracy and at the, when you make it more difficult for people to participate. And, and especially, you know, meetings are so dynamic when you, when you take away the public's ability to comment on, on ongoing things in meetings. That, so, and, and it's not, the, the public didn't do anything wrong. The public shouldn't be punished by having their access curtailed. And I, I think that there is a, a technique, you know, instead of doing it this way, we could just, if we ever get porno bombed again, we could just switch to a telephone conference line. And I know those are, that Frontier has those. I know, I mean, that, that's, that's the select board, the select boards in the, in our, in the area, that's, that's our policy, that if there's a problem with the, the Zoom meeting, you go straight to telephone conference. And the only problem there is you have to identify each speaker, but you can't, you know, th- th- those are, are fairly safe. And I think that would at least allow people to, the public to continue to participate unfettered. So I, I didn't, I didn't get why technically that was the only solution or while that, why that was perceived as the path of least resistance or whatever. I, I don't get that. So, that's my, that's my comment.
Thanks Phil. Darius, you want to say anything on that?
I mean, there's other ways of doing it, you know, we can have a phone, I mean, we gotta figure out how to technologically set that all up. But yeah, I mean, I suppose we could. I'm also told that Google's going to have a major update on their things. Maybe there'll be better security when that releases in October as well, that might be able to change the way we do business as well. I basically called the attorney, asked him how we should do this. He said, this is how your neighboring districts do it. And put that out there. I'd say that the one thing that is, was, I would say is missing is that when I looked at Amber's earlier today, they have a phone number people can also call in on and leave messages for public comment up into the, before the meeting. And so maybe that's something that, that way you don't have to deal with the literacy level of somebody having to write a, a comment. They could just leave a public comment. And obviously you could screen that before it goes there too. So I mean, that's another level we could add to that kind of thing. But again, I mean, the, being able to call in live, I mean, we can, I can, I can look into figuring out how that's possible.
Thanks. Phil is up? He's shaking his head. I can't hear you Phil.
That, that would definitely be my, my preference to have some sort of ability for people to still participate live.
Thanks Phil. Can we, I guess, since it's on the agenda tonight, and I, I don't know the procedure for it, since we probably need something and like Darius, you said you put in an emergency protocol for tonight, can you keep it as an emergency protocol indefinitely? Or should we vote on something like this tonight with then you maybe looking, looking ahead at other methods, you know, of, of a way to incorporate the public that, that, that Phil is advocating for?
Yeah, you could, you could definitely do it that way. I mean, I don't feel great, I would rather that you vote a policy and then change that policy rather than running off. Give a general review of that, change your policy of, of public comment. So I, I use the emergency thing here because I didn't know how we're going to do public comment and you can't change your policy unless we have a meeting. And so I, I made, and that's basically what the attorney said I could do. You could, you know, it clearly can be done as an emergency. So I would say yes, you should probably vote that you want this done. And then you would say, Mr. Hall, could you please put it on the agenda? We want to discuss this again at the next meeting. And then Darius, go get me, go get us some other options. Is basically how you would do it.
Well, unless other people have more comments, then I, I move to vote on this policy. But then with the, I don't know the word to use, the instruction for Bob to bring it to another agenda item for maybe a better way to incorporate the public into making their comments.
You, we ought to add the waiving of the first and second reading to that motion so we don't violate our own policies.
Correct. Before you, before you vote that policy, you're gonna, before you vote that, you're gonna have to say, you're gonna have to waive your thing. So, but you could, you could second that motion. That way we have that done and then we can move to waive our policy of, of a, two reading of a policy. We have a policy, for those who don't understand what we're saying, we have a read once, vote at next meeting policy. In an emergency situation, we can waive that. But it's going to require you to vote to waive that.
Is this, that's just the policy, B E D H, correct?
Yes. E E D H.
So do we have a motion to vote to waive?
Can I ask?
Yeah, hold on one second, let's see. Do we have a motion? Amy, did you make a motion?
Well, I did make a motion, but I, I think I got a little confused in, in how or, or are, are we voting on my motion? Or are we just voting on, Bill brought something up about violating our own policy. I,
That motion's out of order until we waive the, waive the readings. We gotta waive the readings first.
So there's a motion to waive the reading?
Second. Discussion on it? We're just, this is the one to vote to waive the first reading. Anybody else have anything before we vote on it? And then we can bring up. Go ahead Judy.
Bob, Halla?
Yeah.
Keith? Lynn?
Yeah.
Damian?
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah.
Melissa?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I believe Ashley left, is that right? Looks like she's gone.
Back.
Phil? Judy, yes. Olivia?
Yes.
Okay. That was the motion to waive the reading. Now we need a motion, oh, sorry Bob, cut it.
Go ahead.
A motion to approve policy B E D H on public comment. There a motion for that vote?
I, I guess I didn't say it in that language, but yeah, I,
That's just how Donald wrote it.
That's how I kind of, I made the motion to, to vote on that.
Perfect.
Second?
Second? Thank you. Roll call, Bob, Halla?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Damian?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Billy? Oh, sorry Phil. Phil?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Olivia?
Yes.
I don't know what came over me. I apologize. All right.
Thank you.
Judy reports. I will make a note about addressing other options and opportunities for public comment after that vote.
They're putting it on the next agenda.
I have, I have nothing for the committee. Anything for the collaborator yet Lynn?
No, not yet. We haven't met yet.
Hey Bob?
Yes.
I didn't see have something, she had a question. I heard her like four times.
Missy's got a question?
She does.
I do, thank you.
I finally.
A ball funky with.
I, I just want to know if, if it's possible to set up, just as you're exploring this, to set up some sort of like live chat feature? So maybe we have a room for us and then kind of a, a live chat for other people to ask in to, to kind of make it a little more interactive without maybe being on the same platform. So people could read comments to us and then we could interact with that. I don't know if it's possible, but just kind of an idea as you're looking at things.
Thanks. George, do you have anything more that you would like to share with us?
Just a, just a couple of quick things. I basically, so I shared the principal's report with, with everybody this afternoon. I just wanted to, to publicly acknowledge, we've got two brand new teachers that have started with us. Olivia Froch, who's joined us as a special education teacher and Levi Owens, who has joined us as a math teacher. So I wanted to officially welcome them. I've shared our numbers with you in terms of how many students we've got going remote versus hybrid and outplaced. So you can take a look at those when you have a chance. But overwhelmingly, we have, we have, the majority of our students have chosen to, for the hybrid option. And, and the last thing I wanted to highlight was, I, I did want to highlight the, the introduction of our family tech center. Technology is, is such an integral part of what we're doing right now and, and the IT guys are working so hard. So we, there is, the IT guys are working so hard. So, we, there is, there is, there is a link on our webpage. If families are having difficulty with, with Schoology, or if they're having difficulty with, with Power School or anything like that, they can basically, they can go to the link and they can, they can sign on there. So, I just wanted to give people, just give people those updates. And I've gotten one more, one more piece of information I want to share with everybody. And I neglected to put his name on here, but we had a long-term sub last year by the name of Kenneth Eckstein, who's actually joined us as a full-time faculty member in our social studies departments. We want to welcome Ken as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, George. Libby, do you have a question? I think she's frozen. We'll come back to you, Olivia. Darius, do you have a report?
No report. The only comment off of what George was saying is that we are, for those who know people, are looking for work. We are looking for substitute teachers. It's going to be across all, we can take people for a single day a week, you know, certain days they can, they can't do. Everything's automated now. We can have them assigned to certain buildings, not just Frontier, but all our schools. You know, this is going to be a really important factor for us moving forward because we are encouraging people to stay home if they're feeling ill. And that means if absences go up, and we already are a little bit short-staffed with the amount of people that we have accommodations to, you know, working remotely and that kind of thing. So, it's going to be, it's going to be, put us in a tough spot if we, if there is a flu amongst the staff and where people have to stay home, where they may have powered through in the past. So, we're looking for substitutes. We're also looking for substitute custodians. And we're also looking for substitute nurses. And I believe in the district overall, we're also looking for a few more IAs. So, if you know anybody looking for work, I mean, there is a, we've got very few applicants for any of these kind of positions with, I know there's high levels of unemployment right now, but people know people. It's always the best word of mouth. So, if you know anybody, anybody watching knows anybody, just reach out to the building principal and they can point you the right direction on how to apply for any opportunity.
Thank you, Darius.
Free advertisement.
Yeah. Libby, did you have a question before? You were frozen. You were like raising your hand.
Yeah. No, some of you are frozen, so I can't tell if I'm frozen or not. I have a tech question for the tech. I had gone on the tech, family tech page, and there was no way to contact any people if you had, because I had a specific question. And so I contacted Kevin Murphy, and he said he's not the person to contact, and that I should ask you guys who we should contact. So, I just didn't know if maybe we could put somebody on that, like if you, if you need a person, we need to put a person.
So, yeah, we can definitely do a person. We can either do Maureen Bautista, or we can do Scott Paul. So, I'll check, I'll find out from Scott who we'd like to, who we would like to.
Okay.
I know it's not.
Good question. Darius, are we going into executive session?
No, not unless you want to. It's your meeting.
No, sir. How about a motion to adjourn? Lynn? Mr. Chair? Thank you, Bill. Judy?
Uh, you're too late.
Roll call, Judy?
Yeah, Bob?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Damian?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Olivia?
Yes.
Perfect. 8:35. Good job.
Darius, are you still on?